Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall for our Planning Commission meeting this evening. First thing I want to reiterate from the gentleman on the TV screen there is to please silence your cellphones. And also, when giving public testimony, when that time does arrive, please limit your comments to five minutes in total. And also, please ensure that you're delivering new testimony to the commission when you do. At this point, we'll go ahead and get rolling with our consent agenda items. Denise?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item one, approval of May 3, 2017, minutes of regular meeting. Item two, May Platts. Item three, 6589, 2017, rezone from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the I1 Light Industrial District located at 1,000 East 60th Street North. Item four, 6591, 2017, rezone from the Rec. Recreational and RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density Districts to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District located at 400 Northwest Avenue. Item five, 6604, 2017, rezone from the S2 General Institutional Planned Unit Development District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density located at 2308 South Duluth Avenue. Item six, 6687, 2017, rezone from the AG Agriculture District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District located at 4,000 South Ellis Road. Item seven, 6704, 2017, rezone from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District located at 3008 East 26th Street. Item eight, 6726, 2017, rezone from the S2 Institutional Campus Planned Unit Development District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District located at 1826 South Grange Avenue. Item nine, 6718, 2017, preliminary subdivision plan for Cardinal Cove Edition located west of South Marion Road and north and south of West 38th Place. Item 10, 6719, 2017, preliminary subdivision plan for Vera McKinnon South Edition located at the southeast corner of South Louise Avenue and West 69th Street. Item 11, 6720, 2017, initial development plan for Vera McKinnon Medical Campus located at the southeast corner of South Louise Avenue and West 69th Street.
Thank you, Denise. Is there anyone on the commission or staff that would like to move any of the consent agenda items?
Yeah, we have a request from the applicant to defer item number six would be to the July, Thursday, July 6, Planning Commission meeting. And we also had a request from a neighbor to move item number 11, the initial development plan, to the regular agenda.
Very good. Thank you, Jason. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to see any of the other consent agenda items moved?
I just need to better, want to, my name is Jim Peterson, homeowner on 6110 Hemingstone Drive. So I just want to get clarification. What's, what is the property included in item 10? Or if I can't?
Yeah. I apologize if I'm out of... Just for the gentleman saying item number 10 and 11, the same amount of properties included in both of those, we've already moved item number 11 to regular agenda and we'll do the whole public hearing.
Thank you very much. Seeing no additional action, I need an approval for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to amend, to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we got a motion to approve and a second for the consent agenda. And at this point, we need a motion to amend the consent agenda deferring item number six to July 6, and also moving item number 11 to the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion on that? And real quick, I can do that, right Denise? Put them both in one motion?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, at this point, all in favor of the item number six deferral and the item number 11 moved to the regular agenda, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, now, I'd like to take a vote on the amended consent agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Consent agenda has been approved. So, anyone in the audience that was here for items number one through 11, with the exception of item number six or 11, you may, you may leave. And we'll move forward with the regular agenda. Need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of approval of the regular agenda, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. We'll move forward. Denise?
Item 11, 6720, 2017, initial development plan for Vera McKinnon Medical Campus located at the southeast corner of South Louise Avenue and West 69th Street.
Your chair, I'm going to recuse myself. Thank you, John.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Building Services. This is an application by Damian Grebel, representing a Vera McKinnon Hospital. This is, the applicant is requesting approval for a development of a medical campus at the corner, southeast corner of West 69th Street and South Louise Avenue. Just a little history on this. This property in question here was zoned in 2012 as a planned development district, and then with the passing of Shape Place's zoning ordinance in April of 2014, it was then rezoned, since we did away with planned developments, to a campus institutional planned unit development. The institutional campus planned unit development allows constructions of businesses and community facilities of unlimited size, multifamily residential and commercial uses under 25,000 square feet upon approval of final development plans. Final development plans are consistent with the approved initial development plan and will be approved administratively. Plans that are not in conformance with their initial development plan, then those would come back for additional public hearings. As I stated before, some of the uses allowed are office, commercial, and then it would also allow apartment residential up to three stories and 48 units. The plant, land uses that are indicated on their submitted initial development plan include a hospital building, which would utilize the BCF-3 form of approximately 171,600 square feet and a height approximately 80 feet high. There's also a medical office building with a link to the hospital of approximately 98,000 square feet, and an athletic facility in the future of 114,000 square feet. Most of the things on their plan, they didn't get specific with setbacks, buffer yards and different things like that. However, anywhere where this campus is adjacent to single-family twin homes, there will be significant Level D, Level C buffer yards to make sure that they are buffering their campus from those existing residential uses. The submitted initial development plan does provide that necessary land use transitions within and the outside edges of the planned unit development. As you can see by the plan, they really are concentrating more in the northwest and central portion of the, of the parcel with the first phase of their construction. Because the subject application for the Vera McKinnon South Campus Initial Development Plan is consistent with the required standards of an S2 PUD and has recognized that final development, excuse me, final development plan requirements and future amendments beyond this proposal, beyond the two buildings shown, will be reviewed at the time of the submittal for each individual building to minimize those negative effects that I spoke about with adjacent to the existing single-family and twin-home residential uses. Staff does recommend approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. There are also some representatives from a Vera here that could probably answer some more specific questions if you have any.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chair. Jason, did, just talk a little bit about process here. So this is an approval just for these two buildings in these locations. Anything larger or different would have to come back for planning commission approval, and all setbacks and buffer yards and everything that are currently in the ordinance would have to be met, correct?
Correct. These specific buildings, there are thresholds within the ordinance. I believe it's like 10% increase in size. But as of this plan right now, the only two buildings that could be constructed without coming back in front of this body would be these two buildings, and they would have to be substantially similar to what is shown here today.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners?
Was there any signage shown in the initial development plan?
There wasn't at this time. I think they're just still figuring out those specific phases, and I believe the applicant can maybe give you more of an update on, on where they are and those specific processes with connection, signage, and, and specific buffering and things, and how far along they are on that.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for staff, commissioners? Thank you, Jason. Is the applicant here this evening? Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Richard Molsey with Vera Health, 800 South Outlook Drive in Sioux Falls. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, on behalf of Vera Health, we are very excited about this development. This will bring a whole new level of very modern outpatient-focused types of care. Our city is growing very rapidly. Our facility on Cliff Avenue is maxed out, and it is our opportunities in Sioux Falls to create new campuses. We've been very proud of our campus at Vera Principes, at Vera Heart Hospital, Vera Behavioral Health, and this is our newest one. It will focus on orthopedics, GI, and sports, and this will be the start of the development of the 80 acres that we currently own. Be happy to answer any questions that the commission or any of the citizens may have on this development.
No additional questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to step forward and address item number Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Peterson. I'm a homeowner on 6110 Hemingstone Trail. And we all know Vera is coming there. It's going to be a nice facility. Just need clarification. I did talk to Vera today and answered questions, so there was a little confusion, and some of the homeowners may be present, but I can only speak for myself. So when we approve this, and we know that's coming, the concern was, previous meeting, which is off the docket tonight, that conservation land, which is on 69th, like right across from the fire station or buffers Hemingstone Drive? I think that is off the table, but there was a question on roads. Is there, in this plan, is roads addressed through your planning commission, or is that a different group? Because I've talked to somebody in the planning office, most helpful is somebody in the engineering office, so I was just, need clarification, because some of the people in those neighborhoods were asking about access in and out. Is that part of this plan, or it'll be at a later date?
Believe you could kind of, well, Richard, I don't want to speak for you if you wish to address that.
I think I've talked to Bob today, so I'm just trying to get clarification for...
Sure. At the present time, you can see by the, by the plans, we're looking at access to the property off of 69th and Louise is the only thing. So as, as it further develops, the city engineers have talked to us about access if needed off Hemingstone. At the present time, in our development philosophy is, we don't want to do that. It's not to say that it may not happen in the future, but at the present time, we would like all access for this property to, at the present time, come off of 69th and off of Louise as shown here. And then I think if you take it to the, where the, where you see the next, the building, you'll see another possible access, and that would be, I think the fire department's requiring that as a ring road through there. But as, as shown, that is our expectations for current access to the property. We really do want to avoid Hemingstone if we can.
Right. Yeah. So at this time, that's the only question I have. We may come back at a later date. A planning commission wants to make the conservation land institution or type of institution, but I just wanted to seek clarification. We look forward to having a Vera as a neighbor, and they've been very helpful.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on item number 11? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Casey Mercer. I'm also a resident of Hemingstone Trail, 6102. And I'm here this evening, I first took, for a couple of reasons. One, I want to compliment the planning staff. They were very helpful. I spoke to them at length, but my comments, and I said, "Well, did you have questions?" I don't, most of them have been answered either today or this evening. But I did want an opportunity to make a statement, and that is that, yes, this is early, and I think it's important to make these statements early, because as these plans evolve, it's a terrible time to then come back and say, "Oh, couldn't you do X, Y, or Z." And so, like the previous speaker, this is a wonderful opportunity for Sioux Falls, and we look forward to being neighbors with a Vera and their facility there at 69th and Louise. I also, though, want to make sure that people understand that Hemingstone Trail is basically a gateway into Prairie Hills. It's really a limited access area that's very, very large. And because we live right there on the corner, we know how the traffic already backs up there at certain times of the day. We know that this is all residential. So, all I do is ask, keep that in mind, you will see this over and over through your tenure in the planning commission, and keep in mind that that whole loop around that property is all residential. And, and with that, we really appreciate keeping in mind the buffers. We have a great history of that already in that area. Across the street, we have our own city building, a fire station, that, that the city went to great lengths to make sure that it was pitched roof and looked, looked like something appropriate adjacent to a residential neighborhood. Same with Northwestern Energy. They're right across the street on 69th Street, and if you look at that building, they, they also, it's, it's large, but it looks like a house. Pitched roof, siding, those kinds of things, and what they did with their, the landscaping in front, their setback, and where they have their parking lot was, is excellent, and is really a good neighbor to all of the residential area. So, thank you for letting me share my opinions. Thanks.
Sure, thank you. Any questions for, sure, okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to speak on item number 11?
Hi, Paul Bezdechek from 6404 Callington, so we'd be one street over. Just a quick question for a Vera in regards to the Prairie Hills Park that's adjacent there. I heard some commentation throughout the neighborhood in regards to connecting trails through a Vera then into that park. Wanted to get a little bit more information about that.
Yes, that's a good point. We've had conversations with the City Parks Department and have agreed with them that access points from our property, so if you go from Hemingstone and 69th, follow that down property line essentially to the south to where that park is, we've agreed with the city that when we develop that, we'll develop that to the standards of a, of the Greenway. So eight-foot access, so bikes easy to walk, and we've, we've agreed with the City Parks Department to make that access that way into the park. And then, anything that would be then from the west side of the park onto our land is something we've not discussed with that. But it is our intent, as we develop this, that between our property and the residential area, there'll be substantial berms. There'll be very modern landscaping. Matter of fact, we're planting trees, if you've been to the south part of the property, we're planting trees so that we can have mature trees when we get to that area. There'll be substantial, the, the hospital building and the clinic building has, has planned to have basements. So there'll be extensive waste soils from when we dig out those basements, and we plan to use that then in the berming on the east side of the property, and then again further on the south as we continue that arboretum that we have there to do that. So, yeah, we have worked with the city, discussed with the City Parks Department, access to that park along our property. We're 100% supportive of that to the city standards that it would be, and it's part of our development concepts.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for Paul before he...
No, I'm good, thanks.
Sure, good. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak to item number 11? Seeing none, I will close the floor on that. Amy, sir?
Matthew Roach, 2420 East Baxter Circle, also a owner on 2805 West Layton Circle in Prairie Hills. As far as buffers and setbacks, I guess I'd have a question for a Vera that would protect the existing neighborhood people. Like, see the little green dots that you guys have around the border of a Vera there? There's already homes existing in the Prairie Hills section of that. I guess I'm a little lost as to why a Vera would give such a buffer against 69th Street, yet tucked so close to those people's homes that are on the south side of that east building.
Our plans, though not fully developed, are, the concept is that we're going to buffer around those residential areas. So that what you would see where those green dots are, which is the property line between the residential areas and the Vera property, that's where we see the extensive berming and the extensive landscaping that would be there. So, we don't want, we don't want anybody, you know, on their deck on a night like tonight enjoying a nice cold beverage to have to look into a hospital building. I mean, I wouldn't want to do that. We don't want, we don't want that. So there'll be proper setbacks that the city requires, and then, then we will soften that area. And again, we plan on starting a substantial part of that yet this year so that we can get the planting in this fall, so it'll be nice next year, be able to maintain that. And so you'll see along that area, a whole concept of berming and landscaping to delineate and to separate the institutional properties from the residential properties.
So the, the green outlines that we're seeing here are conceptual, and that's not actually the setbacks that you're going to build on?
Right now, those are conceptual, but it's very close to, it would be very close to where we're looking at.
Do you see the portion which I'm talking about, north on 69th Street? Just the burned land that's not parking lots?
North of 69? We don't own any property north of 69?
No, I'm saying north up by 69th.
On the north side?
The giant Greenway there. What is the advantage to giving that buffer to 69th Street and not giving the buffer to the people that already live in that location?
Oh, I'll, Damien, they answer that in the technical areas.
Damian Grebel, Earhart Griffin and Associates. Again, we haven't requested any reduction in the setbacks for any of our perimeter properties or any properties that we will be up against residential properties. So I believe the Level D buffer yard, and I'm just winging it here, is a 40-foot, 45-foot minimum setback. So that's what we plan on doing, and in the text, you also see that as well. We'll provide the 45-foot minimum setback, the berm, and then additional landscaping as well. So if there's any place where adjacent to residential, we'll provide the minimum setback. Up along the north on 69th Street, that's also a low area, so that could be the possibility for detention area. So that's why you may be seeing a larger gap. Just looking forward to providing those services that we'll need to do for the development as well.
As this goes further along in front of the council, would you guys provide people with whether or not it is detention? Or if it is not, instead of speculating that it could possibly be and leaving all this gray area, instead, you know, having the buildings where they're at, I know would help the people that have already invested life-changing amounts of money, you know. There, there's a big difference if they have a 45-foot minimum setback, or if a Vera can push that building further north, not, not harming any of their objective other than giving the people that live behind them more, more space.
Right now, the buildings are located, and that's what initially is approved, and they cannot be moved going further, going ahead without coming back to this council. So this would be the location of the buildings. Yes, that area to the north of that athletic facility is the lower, low area, and that would be the detention area. That, that comes through with final engineering plans, and that's not, quite honestly, what's discussed at this point in time. So we leave an appropriate space so we can incorporate that into our plans. Again, any other, you know, setbacks against the residential properties, we will meet those requirements. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Did you have any other questions, comments, sir? Commissioners, any questions for? Nope. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for item number 11 from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll now close the floor to testimony and look for commission action.
Motion to approve, item 11.
Second. I had a motion to approve item number 11 and a second discussion.
It's obviously very early in the design process, but it looks like a Vera and their designers are looking for some nice pedestrian traffic flow through the space and all those kinds of things. So that's exactly the kind of thing we're looking for in this kind of an initial development plan. So I think it looks like a good plan so far.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin.
Mr. Chair, I would echo Commissioner Irvin, and also, I think this is a good example of a public hearing where the neighbors got to ask questions of the applicant, and the applicant responded appropriately. So we thank the neighbors for coming out and addressing your questions.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of item number 11, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 11 is approved. Denise?
Item 12, 6652, 2017, conditional use for a bed and breakfast located at 732 North Columbia Drive.
The applicant here is Dennis and Barb Ernstur. They are requesting to convert their existing single-family home into a bed and breakfast establishment. I'll quickly run through some of the conditional use standards for a bed and breakfast. They are required to be in residential structures with a minimum of 1,800 square foot of floor area. They shall be in compliance with the applicable state laws, including registration with the South Dakota Department of Health. Such uses shall be incidental use with an owner-occupied principal building. Off-street parking requirements shall be one-half space per guest room and shall be in addition to the, the parking requirements that are required of any single-family home. Length of stay shall be not to exceed 14 days. Meals are, meals shall be limited to just breakfast only. Site plan showing existing parking spaces which they have provided, and then the property owner shall be in good standing of a reservation service organization. The uses, use is for this property and per the standards listed in the ordinance that I've kind of quickly went through. Issues discussed during the public hearing can be adopted as additional conditions if you guys see fit, or clarifying conditions to mitigate impacts. The applicant shall be willing to document the conformance with the standards that I have listed above. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with those above-stated conditions A through F that I had run through. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff on item number 12?
Are there modifications being made to the home, or it's just a conversion to bed and breakfast? I was a little confused.
I, I believe they're just, I don't believe they're doing any modifications. However, the applicant is here and he can discuss if they are looking at constructing anything in there. I mean, it's a relatively new home, so I don't foresee that, but he could elaborate a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Is the applicant here this evening? Please come forward and state your name and address and...
I'm Dennis Ernstur, and I live directly across the street from this house. So we've owned it for 10 years, and we've rented it out for 10 years, and I don't know, just listening to older people, my parents and my in-laws coming to town, no place to stay, you know? We always got people there, it seems like, and we hunt, and we have people come to town, and they'd like to, instead of living in a hotel, they'd like to stay for a few days. And we just talked it over, my wife and my son, and he, who's been living there, you know? And he said, "Dad, why don't we do this?" And as far as changing things, the only thing we did is we put tile floors and wood floors upstairs and painted everything, but we didn't do anything different besides landscape. And I've been outside every day for a month, listening to the neighbors, you know, and, "Hey, what do you think about what could happen here?" And nobody's... what could happen here?" And nobody's said anything bad. And, you know, they basically, I got five, six that said they even talked tonight, but I said, "No, don't show up. I'm on my own." So, anyway, I'll just leave it at that. I just see a big need for that, I think, so.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Ernstur?
Mr. Chair, I have one question. Are you going to have any signage there, or how will your guests, signs, or?
Signs?
Yeah.
No, there's not going to be anything. And believe me, I'm old school. I'm a policeman for our neighborhood. Anything goes wrong, we're not making a party house. I mean, I'm the first one to watch anything going on, but, you know, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Sir, you said it's, you live across the street?
Directly. This house is 732 Columbia Drive. We live at 733.
Your son, oh, your son lives, okay.
Yeah. My son lives in this house right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
And I have talked to the South Dakota Department of Health. They say you got to go through, but they said, "If it ain't approved, you know, we can't do nothing." So if you get approved, I'm supposed to talk to them? Somebody down there told me to do it. I'm not, you know, Diane or maybe Jason, or I think it was Diane I talked to. But they said, "We can't talk to you until they fully approve," so.
Oh, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ernstur.
Thanks. Thank you, everybody.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item number 12?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing none, I'll close the floor to testimony and look for commission action.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Got a motion for approval and a second, any discussion? One thing I would state, just to clarify, Commissioner Lukey, you're talking about approval with the conditions as stated by staff?
Correct.
And the second as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of item number 12 with the noted conditions A through H by staff, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 12 is approved.
Item 13, 6705, 2017, conditional use for an electronic message center located at 5430 East Arrowhead Parkway.
This is an application by Carla Steele for CK Outdoors. The applicant is requesting to add a digital sign to the west face of this existing billboard in the southeast corner of this property, adjacent to Arrowhead Parkway. The existing billboard structure is located on the lot. This parcel is zone C4. However, the specific lot is not, does not have any development on there, therefore, we don't have an established form. Numerous digital billboards are located along Garterial Street. The east face of this billboard at this location is already digital, is already an electronic message center. Due to the existing location of the billboard, staff feels that the addition of the digital sign on the opposite side, west-facing, will not have the negative effects on surrounding properties. And staff feels the additional face should not impact the property values or distract traffic with the other billboards that are already currently in this location. Once the C4 commercial property is developed, and we get an established retail form on this lot, then the sign will be no longer non-conforming, and it will be brought into compliance. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit with the following stipulation, that the owner and the applicant have been notified of the Arrowhead Parkway is scheduled for expansion in the next three to five years, and are aware that this billboard may have to be relocated outside of the right-of-way with the expansion of the street, but on Lot 3, Track A. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you, Jason. Is the applicant here this evening? Good evening.
Carla Steele, CK Outdoor. We are requesting to add a digital face to our existing structure on the west side. We have been in contact with the infrastructure design group, and this structure will not be required to be moved during the change of the highway. And we would just like the opportunity to provide more advertising for businesses in that area as you're headed out in the eastbound direction on Arrowhead Parkway.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Steele.
Thank you.
Is there one in the audience that would like to speak on item number 13? Seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion to approve and a second, any discussion?
With the stip, number one there, the stipulation?
Oh, yes, correct.
Motion and second with the staff recommended stipulation. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval of item number 13, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item 13 is approved.
Item 14, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota amending the revised ordinances of the city by revising planning and zoning application fees.
Thank you. Jeffrey Schmidt, representing planning staff this evening. This item is being proposed to be moved forward to city council, and then city council will be reviewing it during their budget hearings. If they find it feasible, then they would be able to adopt it and approve it, and it would be effective in January of 2018. Staff is recommending to increase our fees approximately $75 for change of zones or rezonings, and for the items of preliminary subdivision plan and initial development plans of $75. Those types of things, raising them the $75 would be more in line with things in the region or fees in the region. As you can see in the slide in the staff report in front of you, a rezoning would then be up to the cost of, our rezonings would be going up to $650 with the $75 increase. And at $650 in city of Sioux Falls, a rezoning in St. Cloud is $675. In Lincoln, Nebraska, it's $988. And in Rochester, Minnesota, it's $1,900. Raising all of these fees on an annual basis would total increase our budget by $5,700. So it's not a lot of money, but it does bring the opportunity for, for us to talk to our planning commissioners and city council about what we charge for fees, which you generally don't hear about. So it's just a good opportunity to bring it in front of the public and show what we charge for fees. So if there's any questions.
Any questions for Jeff, Commissioners? I guess thank you on behalf of the city residents for not recommending the Rochester, Minnesota size increase. Look for commission action. Or, I'm sorry, first, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item number 14? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second, any further discussion? All in favor of item number 14 amending the ordinance, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item 14 is approved. Move to adjourn.
Second, or motion.
Motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Make it a great night, Sioux Falls.